All right. We will call this meeting to order. This is the local planning agency, which will meet before the regular council meeting. Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If we please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for joining us this evening. The first item, item number three on our agenda. Deborah, if you can please read in that item.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the town's comprehensive plan to create a property rights element, providing for an effective date. That's application number PA 22-2.
Great, thank you. All right.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so Keith, is this...
Yeah, I mean Jeff can get into this more, but this is a requirement now under state law that we adopt this. Jeff, do you want to add exactly what it does from your standpoint?
Sure. The legislature's been threatening to do this for many, many years. It just never passes. This session, it passed, but it's not quite as onerous as a lot of us were expecting. All it does is ask the town to adopt four basic statements that are self-evident, that the town won't trample constitutionally protected property rights, won't do things in violation of case law with regard to property rights, that'll respect people's right to use their easements and this type of stuff. Keith's the attorney. If he sees anything particularly concerning in there, he'll say so, but it looked, it's pretty benign as far as I'm concerned, and we just took it right from the statute. It's pretty general stuff.
We don't have a choice.
Okay, all right.
Well, you do have choices to the language. You don't have to adopt this exact language, but again, I didn't see anything that was particularly concerning.
Gotcha. Okay, good. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah, if you could please call the question.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number four, please.
A resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the town's comprehensive plan to amend the definition of the term "guest house", providing for an effective date. Application number PA 22-1.
Great, thank you. Jeff, maybe you can just kind of walk us through the background on this?
Sure. This ordinance is before you based on some resident requests to be able to build a guest house, 1,200 square feet on a property that is slightly under a full acre. The comprehensive plan and the code, both in lockstep, limit guest homes on properties between 35,000 square feet and one acre to 600 square feet, whereas if you have one acre or more, you're allowed 1,200 square feet. What this ordinance would do, this would amend the comprehensive plan to allow any property over 35,000 square feet to have a 1,200 square foot guest house.
While still staying within the limitations of the...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Any construction that isn't exempt by the Right to Farm Act is subject to the maximum plot coverage for that applicable zoning district. So, a property owner can decide, they can max out their plot coverage building a house. They can have a house, detached garage, and a guest house, but they all have to, the total construction has to stay within that plot coverage limit.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Just want to mention a few things, just to bring it up relevant. This was taken up by the comprehensive planning board yesterday. It was not a unanimous vote, but they voted to keep things the same, not to make any changes. I really think that we're trying to fix something that's not broke. It's already gone through the run the gauntlet, for lack of a better way, a decade and a half ago, or two decades ago. And, you know, I've got objections to changing a townwide law for one person. I really see a major problem, and I don't think that's the policy we want to adapt. And that's, you know, total observations on everything going into last night.
Right.
So, therefore, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Appreciate a second.
Yeah. Let me, just before, Keith, is that the right motion if we don't want to take up this item? Is it best to deny it, or is it...
At this point, it's just a local planning agency, so it's important for you to send a recommendation to the town council. So, it would pass on a 3-2 vote, any direction that you all would go. Then when it gets to the town council, it would require to approve five unanimous votes, if not, it's deemed to be denied.
Gotcha, okay. So, thank you. So, is there a second to Gary's motion?
I'll second Gary's.
Okay. So, it's a motion to deny this item, basically meaning that we would leave things exactly the way they are. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, Steve. I do have a question on this item. If we deny this item here, can we address the present ordinance that's there to maybe amend it a little that would say if a person came before the council and asked for a variance, that the council could decide on an individual basis? Right now, that's not in there. And to not allow somebody to at least present what they have? Some of these properties here are only a couple hundred square foot from lack in the 4,300, so, but they've got no right now to come in and say, hey, you know, I meet the setbacks, I do this, I do that. Would we be able to amend what's there now if we deny this here?
Well, because the comp plan rules over the actual code of our town, and this comp plan says it's not allowed, a variance for this is not going to be allowed. We would have to change the comp plan to allow it, and then we could talk about it. I mean, is that accurate?
Councilman, what you're saying is possible. It can't be done through the current items before you. You would have to bring forward a new item to amend the comprehensive plan in order to do that. So, it is possible, but it would require to come back to you at a later date.
All right, but that is something that maybe we could, I'm just asking the council for feedback, if that's something they may even look at, because like I said, this is, there are several circumstances out there where, especially in Deems Ranches, they bought property and they were told they were buying an acre, but what they ended up buying was a builder's acre, and there's many properties, I just looked at them today, that are just over the 40,000 square foot thing, but they wouldn't be able to build in-laws' quarters at 1,200. But they believed that they had the acre, so I just wondering if maybe in the future, if the council might even consider an amendment to the present one that's there to allow, come in and ask for a variance, because they can't do that now.
Right. You know, I personally, what is most concerning to me is that the 10% for rural ranches and the 20% for rural estates is in place. You know, what's divided between the main house and the guest house, I'm not really that concerned about it. I just don't, I just need those limits to stay in place.
Absolutely.
That's what really protects the open space.
Absolutely, Mayor, I absolutely agree.
So, basically, what you're saying, I'm on board with it, and by the way, it's a lot more than just Deems Ranches. There are big sections, significant sections out west in country estates that fall into that exact same category that you're talking about.
Exactly. I didn't get a chance to look close up here, I'm sorry. I was busy on Deems Ranches, right there close by, right?
Yep, yep, that's okay. But yeah, it's not, it's more throughout the town, so.
No, I'd never asked to change the 10%, 20% buildout, but someone could go in theoretically, and I know I'm taking up time, but theoretically, they have a 3,000 square foot house. You deny them, the property's 40,000 square foot, they can add 5,000 square foot to their house. Which is worse, adding 5,000 square foot to the house, or adding a 1,200 foot property behind? That was, you know, I'm not...
Yep.
So, that'd just be something I'd like to put out in the future, that's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. That may be something that we want to send back to the comp plan to have them take a look at.
I don't think the comp plan wants us to throw too much back.
They may not. But yeah, it's definitely something we can, we could do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item to deny? Is there any public comment on this item?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. This can of worms was fought back in 2002. It was a very big deal at that time. People have a tendency to abuse what we do, and they find a loophole and they run it. There was a very big discussion back and forth, and this was the modification from both left and right, center, up and down, and this was the compromise that was reached. It has worked very well for 19 years. Why now are we got this, where it was rushed through the comprehensive plan, board last night, to be on this agenda tonight? That is a first in the 21-year history of this town that something has been done like this. Why? It stinks. It was defeated by the comprehensive plan and said it has worked for 19 years, it still works today, do not change it. Let's not refight a battle that has already been finished, put to bed, and 99.999% of the town is okay with it. So, I urge every last one of you to defeat this item. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. All right, seeing no other...
Hello, I'm Bob McFarlane, 16611 Southwest 49th Street in Deems Ranches, and I'm the one that this was brought up for, because in January of 2020, we were told by employees of this town that we could build 1,200 square feet in-laws' quarters on our property. It's just under a full acre. Now, a little bit of the history, gentlemen. We gave our house to our son, who grew up out here, his wife, and our grandchildren to take over our house, with the intention that we would have an in-laws' quarters built on this thing. We have incurred costs. We've had the soil test done, we got an architect, we found out that, I was told today, well, why don't you just attach it to the house? We could do that, but we want to keep this rural, so instead of letting us build a 1,200 square foot house, I can build 5,000 square feet more on that property if I wish to, legally, 5,000 more square feet. So, I don't know what the big deal is, guys. I can attach it to the house, but unfortunately, septic tank is right there. So, I got to, or I got somebody to come out today and tell me, well, we can move that septic tank, that'll cost you $15,000 to put in a new septic system back there. That does not include removing the old one. Just putting in a new one is $15,000 more out of my pocket because of misinformation that I was given by employees of Southwest Ranches.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, what he was saying last night is we should build a 600 square feet. Who can live under 600 square feet? A bedroom and a bathroom, you know? Our house is 3,800 square feet, and we're happy to move to a 1,200 square feet, but we want to have a little office, a bedroom, a living room, a dining room, just 1,200 square feet, a laundry room, you know, basic things, and we're happy, you know, to be there. So, our son, with his wife, and our three grandchildren have our big house. I mean, why to live there until we're 80 or 90 and give it to them when the grandkids cannot enjoy it? They're 12, they're nine and six. So, this, our son came when he was eight months old, and now he's going to be 39 this year. So, it's perfect for them to live there.
Right.
So, we said, it's time, let them, let them have it now, my husband and I said, and we'll move in the back, we will be perfectly okay. But 600 square feet, we cannot do it, you know? Now, if we attach, it's going to be, the only place where we can do it, then the problem is that we have more expenses, we have to move the septic tank. So, if you cannot change the way things are done, because, I mean, apparently, since it's working fine and it's not broken, it cannot be changed, but things change all the time, people, you know that. We're in a change, a world that is changing all the time. So, anyway, and so many people here, you know, the way life and situation is now, the kids needs to move in with the parents. I'm a realtor, and I'm just selling a house in Weston now, with the buyer lives in Rolling Oaks, and he says his parents asked him to do that, to build in the back, but there's no time, because of all these permits and all this stuff, and then they just end up buying a house in Weston. So, my point is this, don't change it if you don't want to change it. It's like the gentleman here, I don't know, he must have a special interest in not wanting to change it, but I respect him, you know? But maybe why don't we go about what him, thank you very much, what he was saying? Make an exception for us, just because we were misled. We can show you all the emails. We spent $900 in the, the soil thing will be worthless. We have to spend another $100. You know, the survey will be okay, the architects, you know, we already have the plans exactly where we wanted, right? We have a little lake right by there, you know, away from the house. So, please consider making an exception for us. Don't change it, don't leave other people out, but please go by what he said and make an exemption. Tell us what do we need to do so that this can happen? We, like I said, we're in this deal since 2020. Our son already sold his apartment in Weston, because he's going to give us the money to build that.
Right.
You know? So, he is already there, we're already in place, we're ready to go, and we've been, we're already, since June, we've been living together, and we need to do something, so we're asking you, please let us be the exception, that, you know, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you please just state your name and address for the record, please?
Rossa McFarlane.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Hanif, and I hope you're talking about the property at the corner of Holiday Trail and Lower Railroad?
No. No. No, not yet. Okay, seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Any further discussion by the council on this item?
Steve, I, I mean, I don't want to butt heads with anybody, but would anybody be open to moving this to 40,000 square foot, which is a builder's acre, and letting it go through that way? Instead of 35,000 square foot, I understand, that's a small piece of property, but at 40,000, that's the builder's acre, that's the acre they said they bought, they didn't know it was 40,000. Would council even consider? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, to raise it to 40,000, the builder's acre, for the minimum size?
Yeah. Jeff, do you know any, what the justification was behind, I don't know if there, if it was just a number picked out, or what the justification was for the number that was selected?
I can't say that I recall exactly. Keith, do you remember by any chance?
If I recall, they basically said, well, if you're over an acre, you know, two acres, et cetera, 1,200, you know, without a kitchen facility, and if you're under that, we'll cut that number in half so that you're 600. That's basically what it came down to. The one thing to note, though, is that these are guest homes, so they're transitory. They're not a place you're supposed to live, it's a place you're supposed to visit, you know, or, you know, you're not allowed to rent it, not allowed to have a kitchen facility in it, it's a transitory home. So, when it was looked at in 2002, Noel probably knows more, but when I was at those meetings, it was basically saying 1,200 max, and we'll do 600 for the smaller lots.
Thank you.
I think, just as a councilman comment, I think this, what Jim said, we may want to look at this in the future. I don't think that's for, that's not for tonight, based on what we have in front of, but I think we need to possibly look at that in the future, or at least flip it back to the comprehensive planning board and have them take a look at it again. But I don't think that's tonight's discussion.
Any other comment from the council on Jim's suggestion?
I just want to ask, I mean, you changed 35 to 40,000. Everything else is stayed the same. It, I don't know, it just seemed like a, and like I said, there's a bunch in your area, I didn't get to look up yours though, but I did look up Deems Ranches and a few there in Green Meadows, that I don't think that they realized that they were buying a builder's acre instead of a full acre, and I'm not real sure that I like the definition of guest house. I would honestly like to see it changed to in-laws' quarters. Most of the people that bought these properties 20 years ago are now retiring, wanting a place to live with their kids. It's not a guest house, they're not guests, they're family, so, you know, in-laws' quarters probably seems a much better definition to me than guest house. I wouldn't want a guest house next to me, that seems like people coming and going and in and out all the time. But in-laws' quarters, where your grandmother, your dad, your father, somebody lives, it makes more sense to me. I just, you know, I just don't understand why you would give it to those that have 43,561 square foot, and those that have 43,559 square foot, a different sized piece of, you know? I know you got to put a cutoff somewhere, and I was just suggesting 40,000, that's all.
Thank you, Jim. I'm not, I'm not feeling the support for that.
I know, I know.
That particular recommendation.
I think we should explore.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I, I think that's a, that's the way to look at it, is that it's in a situation like this, we don't have time to think through all of the ramifications of that. I also sat through the contentious discussions that surrounded this whole thing when it passed, you know, almost 20 years ago. It was no fun, there was a lot of difference. So, it would definitely have to be something in my mind that, to your point, we would need to really discuss and really think through. I wouldn't want to do it just on a, kind of a spur of the moment deal. But I'll say for myself, I think there's validity for what you're saying, Jim, I really do.
All right, thank you.
And I think it does, it does bear another looking at, because, and there's other ramifications to it, that if we're really setting it up as an in-laws' quarters, then frankly, that's another, that's another residence on the property. So, there's density issues that come up that are negative, but the other side of it is that, to me, that's another fire fee, if we're looking for, you know, fire fees to go down. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother residence at that point.
Fire, trash, all that stuff.
Yeah, all that stuff. So, so there's a lot, what I'm saying is, there's a lot to think about there, and it's not something that I think is appropriate to do spur of the moment.
I support Gary's thoughts.
Yeah.
I support Gary's position on this.
Okay. All right. I think we are ready for the call to question. So, remember, this is a motion to deny, so, you know, an approval is to deny.
Board Member Albritton.
I'm going to say no.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion to deny, motion to deny passed.
All right, item number five.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the town's Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, to amend the guest house regulations in section 045-030, providing for an effective date. Application number PA 22-1.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
Again, I ask this council to deny this resolution, for the exact same reasons that I stated in the previous one. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Is there any further council comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah, if you can please call the question.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion to deny passed.
Great, thank you. And we have a couple, two sets of minutes for approval from April and September.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or adjustments to the minutes? Is there any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Deborah, if you could please call the question.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed. Minutes passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. We, that is the conclusion of the LPA. We'll now open up our regular town council meeting this evening, and when you're ready, Deborah, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Council Member Albritton.
Here.
Council Member Jablonsky.
Here.
Council Member Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Thank you all again for being here, very much appreciated. We will start with quasi judicial portion of our meeting. Keith, if you have instructions for that?
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. The rules of quasi judicial procedure is in the record. Most of the time, you all work in a legislative capacity, where you make policy and decisions, and when you're in that realm, you can vote by majority vote. When you're acting in a quasi judicial capacity, your judges, and you're making a determination whether or not the applicant has proven by competent substantial evidence that they've met the criteria of the code. In the town of Southwest Ranches, that requires the unanimous vote, all five members of the town council. Tonight, you have one quasi judicial item before you, it's a waiver of plat, before I call up either Jane or Elizabeth, I don't know who's presenting, if Deborah can read it into the record.
This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP dash thirty dash twenty-one to subdivide four point one three six acres of property into two lots of two point oh net acres each, generally located at the southeast corner of La Ray Road and Holliday Trail intersection, legally described as the north one half of tract forty-eight, less the west forty feet and less the north forty feet for roads of the subdivision of section two, township fifty-one south, range forty, east of Everglade Sugar and Land Company, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book two, page thirty-nine. Of the public records of Miami-Dade County said lands lying and being in town, in the town of Southwest Ranches in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Since this item is quasi judicial, anyone desiring to speak on this item needs to be sworn in. If you could please stand and raise your right hand, and Deborah will administer the oath.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's going to be presenting for the applicant? Elizabeth. You know the procedure, Elizabeth. If you could come to the podium, state your name that you've been sworn in and your address, that you understand why you're here, you've read the staff report and stipulated the conditions, and I'll turn it over to Jeff for a presentation.
Yes, good evening, Major and council members. My name is Elizabeth Strugdysian on behalf of police land surveyors representing our clients, the property owners. And yes, I understand the rules. I know the application, and I am relying on Jeff's expertise to make a.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. At this point, we'll turn it over to Jeff Cadums for a presentation for staff.
This application is for a waiver of plat. This is one of the, one of the last three waivers of plat that were submitted before the zoning in progress took effect. So they are procedurally allowed to come forward for this application. This is four point one three six acres at the southeast corner of Holliday and La Ray. It's owned by Nada Padron and Abraham Gomez. They're requesting approval to divide the property into two tracts that are each fractions over two acres for the stated purpose of building a house for the petitioner's daughter. The property contains a house, riding ring, stables, and paddocks. Approximately half of the property has an agricultural property tax classification. A three hundred and thirty-foot FPL primary transmission easement crosses the southern half of the property. Paddocks, stables, and a wooded area are located within the easement. Proposed tract A contains the petitioner's house, the existing house on the property, a large barn, and smaller accessory structures. The stables and one accessory structure do not meet setbacks, setback requirements, although they are within the portion of the property designated agricultural by the Broward County Property Appraiser, and they're not required to comply with zoning setbacks. Although the existing equestrian facilities occupy the majority of proposed tract A, a smaller barn and paddocks could be constructed behind the house in compliance with setback requirements and outside the FPL easement if required in order to meet the, the developing town, the developing policy of ensuring that, that there is room for a barn and paddocks for two horses that we've been, we've been working towards. The proposed tract complies with lot area and lot width requirements, and the plat will continue to comply with plat coverage requirements, and there will not be any nonconformities that the new lot line is going to exacerbate or that the reduction in property size into two lots is going to exacerbate. Although the petitioners and their daughters state they intend to utilize the existing equestrian facilities, the proposed tract B for the new house was configured specifically to provide an area for its own future two-stall barn and paddock that are compliant with all setback requirements. So even if the stable in the power easement right now, it were destroyed and wasn't allowed to be rebuilt, as well as all the other existing structures, as configured for the proposed subdivision, both parcels could meet the requirement for the two-stall barn, the paddock for two horses, consistent with the draft ordinance that the comp plan board looked at, dealing with setbacks from water features, property lines, et cetera. Proposed tract B is just over two net acres, and that, and it excludes a point one three one acre ingress egress easement. So there's a slight, there's a point one three one acre difference between the gross property area and the resulting combination of area of the two lots, once you add them together. It complies with all lot width and area requirements. Existing rights of way widths for both La Ray and Holliday are sufficient. There's no additional dedication required. Tract A, which is the existing house lot, will not have frontage on any street as tract B will wrap around it on three sides. Access to tract A will be via a new ingress egress easement connecting it to Holliday Trail via the existing north and south driveways onto Holliday. The ingress egress easement would also connect the driveways, giving each property owner access to both driveways. And the petitioner has a, a post, a, a presentation material that's kind of colored and a little easier to read than an eight and a half by eleven, for those of you that didn't zoom into the, the electronic file on Novus. We have letters of no objection on file from all the applicable utilities, including Central Broward Drainage District. Central Broward does not review these at the time of waiver of plat. They review these at permit and will consider treating the entire site as a master permit, not necessarily having to separate them with the berm. Staff finds that the application meets the requirements, the technical requirements of the ULDC. Should council approve the application, staff recommends the following conditions be satisfied prior to this approval becoming effective. Recordation of an easement agreement approved by the town attorney has to form granting ingress and egress rights to proposed tract A and providing for maintenance of the improvements within the easement, which is standard for any time we get a, a shared driveway or an ingress egress easement. Removal of all structures that are nonconforming on tract B. I've been assured this has already happened. I think there was one nonconforming structure, and it, and it appears to be, to have been eliminated. I will ask the, the petitioner to confirm that. Pursuant to one fifteen ninety of the ULDC, the applicant, the approval of this application doesn't become effective until the resolution has been recorded in the public records, and the approval will expire within six months from the date of approval unless the resolution and required attachments have been recorded. So that concludes the, the technical aspects, the compliance aspects of the, of the report. To address the, the developing policy that the council's been working on as far as when, when to be able to approve waivers of plats and when to require plating, the intent here is that the parents and the daughter's family live side by side on this property, that the daughter construct a house, and that the parents who don't currently live in that house will renovate that house and move into the house so that they all live on the property at one time. And that's, that's consistent with the, the intent of the council's policy direction regarding waivers of plat. However, in order to ensure that that does happen, I've come up with some, some conditions that the, that the petitioner has agreed to, and I'm going to offer that to council to see if it's acceptable towards meeting the intent of the waiver of plat usage. One would be neither parcel could be sold or transferred within forty-eight months of approval. Neither residence may be rented once the new home is, receives a certificate of occupancy on parcel B for the duration of the forty-eight month period. With that, can entertain any questions?
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff Cadums at this time?
Yeah, just a question, Jeff. The house that's currently there, is that homesteaded? I don't think it is.
It is not homesteaded.
Okay, so, and the property owner does not reside there now?
No.
Okay, so, all right.
Any other members of the town council have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Jeff. I'm assuming right now that there's a fully functional berm system around the outside to maintain the water, and I wouldn't expect berms to be put up to divide these two properties. It just doesn't make any sense. How do we, at some point in time, the, the new property inhabitants will probably sell and move on, how do we protect that one, one, one property doesn't decide to remove berms and begin flooding the other property, since basically they're, they're all within the same four walls, so to speak? Is there any stipulations we'd want to put? Is there anything we'd want to record on the deed to call this out so that people understand that they can't just start tearing it down? Because, all right, it'll impact them, but it's also going to impact the adjoining property.
The way that I see this is that, is that anytime somebody purchases a lot, they're purchasing it, purchasing it as is, and they're not entitled to, to take down a berm. And that could play anywhere in the town. I don't know that we need a separate enforcement mechanism for that. We don't know how Central Broward's even going to treat it. Central Broward, Broward may treat the two properties as a master permit and not even require a berm between the two. That's, that's my input.
So we should probably leave it to them?
I would.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, I, I have a few questions. My, my driving by the property, I saw various vehicles and boats on the property. Will the, and a lot of that is, I mean, some of this stuff's covered with blue tarps and kind of like an eyesore. Would the petitioner be in agreement to remove all of those, except, I guess he has one boat? Will they be in agreement to remove all of those vehicles?
Yes, the petitioner has agreed to do it and had stated that, that they were removed prior to the meeting.
Okay. And just listening to the presentation, both parcels having availability for a barn is actually a very important issue for me. Very, very important. Let's see, are both parcels going to be assessed a separate fire fee and separate solid waste fee?
I'm assuming the answer is yes, because they will be, once the parcel's created, it will be deeded. The, the new parcel will be deeded to the daughter and her, and her husband, and it will be treated like any other, any other separate property in the town that's residential, that's a residential lot.
Right, and looking at, I mean, the parcel where they're considering putting in second residence presently is a riding ring. Is that riding ring going to be given up?
Yeah, well, that, the, the house will be in part of the footprint of that riding ring. I don't know if the petitioner has any intention of relocating it and making it, you know, a smaller but relocated riding ring or, or not. I'll have to defer that to the petitioner.
And, and my belief is that, I'm guessing here, that that has something to do with the nonprofit that's registered to that property.
Yes.
And. Oh, and, yeah, one of my concerns also is that instead of forty-eight months, I'm more inclined to request it be extended an additional year. If that, if there is any, I hope there's not an objection to that. I think that's something that we've done as a council in the past on summer splits. And the petitioner will have to confirm that because I, the most that I've talked to them about is the forty-eight, so we'll have to ask them to agree to that. Fair enough.
Does any other council member have any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call Elizabeth up, and I have a question from a legal standpoint. Jeff, the reason they're subdividing this is because that's the only way they can get two homes on this property?
Correct.
Okay. So in the event the council approves the subdivision and the property owner agrees to a unity of title for the entire property, that would always keep this as a family estate with two legal homes on it?
Yeah, I, I know that the, that the parent's intent was to deed land to their, to their daughter, that they would own that property.
Well, they, they, you know, there's ways of doing it with unity of control also.
Right.
Okay. So I just wanted to point that out to the council, that there is an ability to give them what they want, but still ensuring that only one family unit would always live on that property.
Keith, if I, if I can follow up, is, is this similar to what Assad has done?
Very, very similar through deed restriction and otherwise, that he only put in three homes, you know, and he unified the, the title to that property. Pretty similar.
Would the applicant be opposed to something like that?
We'll call up Elizabeth.
Find out.
What, what, I don't, I don't understand what you're doing here.
So, and I'm only suggesting this because I hear concern from several council members privately, and the issue is they want to subdivide the property because they want two homes on the property.
Right.
Okay? The only way to put two full homes on the property is through a subdivision. The reason why this property is not being subdivided properly, you know, is because of the power lines.
Right.
So that avoids someone to being able to put the property to the south where another house would be.
Right.
If it is the intent of the property owner to build a family compound and to keep it as a family compound with two separate homes, but within a family compound, they can unify control of that so always one family unit would own that entire property. So they get their two homes, but it's always one family that owns the entire property together. The property remains unified.
And why is that a concern of ours? Why don't we, what's, what's the advantage to the town, if any?
Because from other council members that I've spoken to, the concern was not only flipping it, but bringing in, renting it, putting in totally unrelated people in a, in a lot that is configured like this. Because if you look at how the second house will be built, it's not a typical location.
No, no, I get it, I get it, but I don't see how that changes. They could still rent out one, they could still flip it.
They couldn't.
They could flip it and sell both houses.
They could flip both houses together to another family.
Yeah.
Right, but meaning it would be two, one, the, the vision that I would have is that one family, like them, the, the parents and the kids would own one property, that you could unify it in that situation legally.
I, I see. I'm, I'm missing the advan, I, I don't, I don't know why we would go there.
I was looking for a compromise rather than denial, and I thought that was a, a compromise to get them essentially what they want, a family compound, and still get two lots on the property.
I, I, the, the language that I suggested, you know, addresses, addresses renting. I mean, if, with council member Kuzinski's requested condition to, to, to five years, sixty months, and an inability, a prohibition against renting for the period between the seal of the, the new house and that, that six-year period, it seems to meet the intent of the council's direction in only allowing waivers of plat so families can live together side by side and parents can deed off land to their, their children. That's the intent of it. It's the intent of my, my suggested language.
Got a question for Keith. Keith, based on your proposal, what's the impact to fire and?
Two fire fees.
Two fire fees and two, two trash fees.
It basically would unify the parcel for one family unit, related entities to be able to live in that property. You can unify it in any way. This is a legal document that hasn't been drafted yet. So essentially, it would say that a, you know, the two homes must be of related individuals and sold essentially together. It basically does exactly what the property owner is looking for, and that's the only reason why I'm suggesting it.
So, so let's, let's take it to the next step, and I'll use myself as an example. Let's say I decided to split my property and I deeded the north half of my property to my daughter, and she and her husband live there, and we went the route you're talking about, and my wife and I need to move into a senior facility or, or something worse. And we went the route you're talking about, and my wife and I need to move into a senior facility or, or something worse. What happens to that other house that we've been living in? Can they sell, can, could my kids sell that off?
No, only to a related family member.
Okay. Okay.
And, and again, a normal subdivision wouldn't look like this, so normally this would never apply. This is just a very unique circumstance, and, you know, I was attempting to throw it out there as a legal suggestion to thread the needle.
Thank you.
That was it.
Elizabeth, uh, it's, it's for your presentation.
Good evening again. I really don't have any more to say than what Jeff has said, other than the property owners agree to the agreement, so to speak. And they're even willing to make it a five-year of compromise of not renting their, that into their idea of moving, living together. So we have, and, and yes, the property split pretty, in a, in a different sort of way, not, you know, half and half. Just because the utility is spent and, um, the existing house is also kind of smack in the middle of the property. So, but we demonstrated, and I have, um, as Jeff said, a colored, uh, rendering of the split that, that demonstrates even better. That we do have space for a house that is pretty much the same size of the existing house. And we have space for the barn. Thank you, Jane. In pink, we see the property line. Uh, this is how they're going, this is the access easement? This is the access, the access easement, how they're going to share, um, both bridges. And then this, um, driveway goes to the existing house, and they're, they're going to, um, utilize the existing driveway to kind of turn and go into the new house. This is the new house. This is the barn and paddock, and the green light demonstrates the, um, compliance with setbacks. Fifty from the front, twenty-five side and rear, and extra fifty for the barn. And track A, track B, both two acres. And that's my presentation.
Does any member of the town council have any questions of Elizabeth?
I, I do, can you hold that up, please? Like you had it just a second ago. Alright, you can hold it right there and you can look at it, we're pointing right here, right along here.
Yes.
There's paddocks, right?
Um, yes.
Right now, okay, so those paddocks are going to be removed. Is that right? So you can put that driveway in?
Are not going to be removed.
Okay, they're, they're not in the way of the driveway.
This is just an ingress, egress easement. It's not a driveway.
Okay.
The driveway is here.
Okay, alright, alright, that's, that's fine. And, um, the, and, and I remember, um, a couple of times seeing an individual, um, drive his truck in, picking, picking up a landscaping trailer. And then leaving with it. I actually took photographs and had the tag ran on the trailer, and the tag on the trailer was expired. And I just want to make sure that that trailer is never going to be on that property again.
Already been removed.
Thank you.
I have a question. Go ahead, Bob.
So I do have a question for Jeff. Uh, there's kind of a hand-drawn driveway on there. That is, uh, I don't need it, I can just describe it. It's pretty obvious. I'm not sure what the setbacks are. Is there enough room to put a driveway into the house that's going to be to the left side of the property on the diagram?
Yes, there is.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're up, Gary.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, where, where do the current owners live now?
I'm sorry?
Where do the current owners live now?
Please come up to the microphone and identify.
Kristy Castillo. My current address is seven one-one-one Hollity Trail. Um, where I am currently residing with my husband and my parents, um, as we hopefully are able to, um, do this project. So right down the road.
Okay, the second part of the question is, when, when do the parents plan on moving in?
As soon as we are, we have our certificate of occupancy, they plan on moving into the house that's there once it's renovated.
What, the new house? The, the new house?
The sixty, this, the home that's currently on sixty-six twenty right now.
It's in existence right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would, um, Jeff, maybe this is your question. Um, is there some kind of a legal document that can be used to, uh, guarantee that?
I was proposing a, a deed restriction. Uh, Keith may have another suggestion.
I know you talked about the unity.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a deed restriction to force someone to move back into their house, so that's not a deed restriction.
Yeah. Is there something else?
Well, it wasn't to force them to move in, it was that it couldn't be rented anymore. That was, that was the, the intent.
I guess you could require as a condition of approval that it, um, be homesteaded.
Does the applicant?
We don't have a problem with that.
You don't have a problem with that?
We don't, no.
Both properties?
Yes. My mom is here too.
If this is approved.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanna.
No, she didn't say no.
Thank you.
I would, you would ask her, you could just say one more question.
I have one more, I have one more question. Um, uh, Elizabeth, did they, maybe I missed it. Did they agree to the unity of title?
We haven't discussed that with them because that was an idea that just came up with Keith.
I, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you, you, you have a very soft voice, I can't do it.
The unity of title was, just came up with Keith now, so we haven't talked about it with our clients. So I don't know the answer to that. They have to make a decision.
I'll tell you that I'm not comfortable with that proposal. I just, I think it's playing games. I don't like it.
That's not going to fly there.
I don't see, I'll be honest with you, I don't see anything wrong with this. I think they are bent over backwards. Here's somebody that lives in the town. Why are we taking people and, and, you know, just giving them this kind of, why, why does anybody have to sit there and endure what they're enduring here tonight? These are folks that want to have a piece of property, living with their parents and their kids on a piece of property. What, they're, they're already live in town. I, I, I'm embarrassed by this. I'll be honest with you. I'm embarrassed by it. It should have been simple. It should have been simple. It should be straightforward. Trying to take people that want to live in our town, want this rural lifestyle, and we're treating them like they're... Uh, I said enough. I'm embarrassed by it.
Thank you.
Does any other council member have any questions of Elizabeth? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the public for comment.
Noah Hollingsworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. In reply to, uh, Mr. Mayor. It is not these people, but when they come ten, fifteen years from now and have to sell it or desire to sell it. What are we going to do with it then? And the problem is, Lot A is a classic for a flag lot. It is not a flag lot. What they're doing, they're taking Lot B, and they're cutting it in half with a driveway that is existing. They're not changing anything. They're not changing the layout of anything except adding a building where the, uh, riding rink is. That's all they're doing right now. The rock road that goes all the way around through both properties, proposed properties, to the barn area, there's a stable area. Is going to still cross both properties. The stable area is separate on Property A. How are they going to get, without going on Property B, to the stables? Without going on Property B? That's one question. Number two, you're talking about berms and saying, oh, we'll leave it to Central Broward. Well, guess what? It says before the CO, both properties have to be fully bermed. Now, how are they going to put the berm on Property A, that, and Property B, on the property line, the new property line? Where's the drainage going to go, and how's it going to get from Property B down to the drainage, which is where the power lines are? How's it going to get there? Because right now it goes through the rock. But the rock goes through both properties, and if you put a... May I continue? But if you put the berm there, you block the water flow. That's another thing. The, I propose that a flagpole, Lot A is now a flagpole lot because it is isolated without any reasonable access directly to the road without going through Lot B. So it should go north to the road on the far side of the property, and that'll also give access to the stables on the far side of that property. At the same time. When you cut a property in half, you decrease its value, you decrease its worth, you decrease its usefulness. And if Property A is sold and, and Property B is not, or Property B is sold and Property A is not. Then you have the conflict of going through someone else's property to get to your property. And them saying, why are you doing this? You've cut my property in half. Where is the new setbacks for the driveway on Lot A and B? That's been explained. But the flagpole lot should have a flagpole driveway. And that is the truth. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Mohamed Hanif. Any one of you has passed by that property we look at? Anyone of you have seen the lot we're talking about? Mr. David knows. I live, I live across from that lot. Right now that property is used for Airbnb. The house. One entrance. People come in and going wherever they want. When they were doing construction to build the ri, the ring for rodeo. Among the trucks coming in there, destroying the neighborhood to get into there with one driveway. That bridge is so small, how can you accommodate two properties in the same lot? You're talking about mother-in-law and children, whatever it is, to live together in the property. Why can't they build the same house bigger to accommodate the family? Instead of separating that particular lot into two? The way it's situated, the way it's situated, it cannot be done. There'd be difficulties. What about the septic tank? What about the water? There's no city water. You got to pump from the well. When you separate that land from so far apart, you got to accommodate for septic tank drainage, which is going to go in the canal. Because both sides of that property is canal. Everything will be going into the canal. What happens? What happens? I would like to see each one of you go by there and see that property we're talking about before making a decision. Before making a decision. That property will not be used for mother-in-law and daughter-in-law or son-in-law, whatever it is. It will not be used for that purpose. That property going to have a problem in selling, and our property is going to be different around this neighborhood in Southwest Ranches, especially in Sunshine Ranches. I've been here for forty-eight years, and I've seen the man who built that property. I know him personally. I know him personally, and he didn't build that house to accommodate something like this. Right now that house has many other rooms around it are renting right now. Renting right now to illegal aliens. Go in there now and see. There are people who are not accommodated with papers. People from, uh, Puerto Rico, Central America, coming there on Airbnb paperwork and spend a week or two weeks to leave. And that's what you want to separate that property? To do what? Are you talking about mother-in-law and father-in-law? They're not, a couple talk about, they want the children to live on the property. You deny that, but you want to prove this? I want each one of you to go there and see what property is located.
Okay.
Before you make a decision. And before you're saying that, why can't mother and father and children live in the same property separated together? When the daughter ready to sell the property, what's going to happen?
Right.
How's the person going to get to the entrance to that?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. You passed your time. I gave you extra time. I'm hearing the same argument over again, so I'm going to ask you, please sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further, uh, comment from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
None for me.
Uh, Elizabeth, do you have any concluding comments?
I, I've, I've got some questions for them.
No, you can always ask once. I'm going to turn it over to you in one second.
Okay.
For everything.
Just a second, just a second.
Do you have any concluding comments?
I, I do have a comment.
Please.
On what was said. Um, my, do I need to say the name again? Kristy Castillo?
Yeah.
I think there was a lot of accusations there, and I think that, um, we have been in Southwest Ranches since nineteen ninety-eight. I was three years old when we moved in, and I have always lived alongside my mom. Right now, I'm living with my toddler and my husband in one bedroom because we were hoping that this project can be done. Not sure if you have any proof of Airbnb, but that's a complete accusation. And the people that you see coming in and out, I welcome you, just like I think we also welcomed, uh, Mr. Kozinski. Every Saturday, we're serving families of children with special needs. And right now, the person that we're renting to is actually a father with three children with special needs. So I'm not sure if that's considered Airbnb, Central America. I'm not sure where those accusations came from. But if I'm willing to live in that one bedroom with my toddler, it's not easy. Along with my husband, we've been there ever since this project started, and Elizabeth knows how long that's been for. Then I'm pretty sure we're willing to live there and not do as the gentleman accused us of, and that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do you have any concluding comments?
No.
Okay, uh, I think your other client may have a comment.
Andrew Castillo, seven one-one-one Hollity Trail. Simply put, we grew up, we were kids that grew up in Southwest Ranches, and we want to continue to live in Southwest Ranches. It's something that we take pride in, and it's something that we are prideful to say, we, we have pride in saying that we live here, that we are part of it. We love the rural community. If this were to not get approved, we would not be able to stay where we want to stay. It would not be an option anymore. And that would hurt me tremendously, being someone that grew up here, feeling like my own people don't want me here. I've worked hard, I'm young, we're both in the education field. We do our part. We're just hoping that your part can be done as well to assist us. And just making our dreams come true and be able to spend time with our family in a land where we can help people like we generally try to do. Thank you.
Elizabeth, I'm going to ask one final question, then I'll turn it over because, uh, it's been asked so many times. When is that tenancy over in that house?
The what is over?
The tenancy, the tenants, when are, when is that lease over?
I believe they said that as soon as, oh, month, two months.
So it could end at any time?
Yeah.
Alright, Mayor, turn it over to you for questions, deliberation.
Thank you, Keith. Um, I have a few comments. I don't know if anyone else wants to go first? It's up to me? Okay, alright. Yes, I'll, please, come on up.
She hasn't been sworn. She's not sworn.
She hasn't been sworn.
Have you been sworn?
I don't think, um...
Okay.
Deborah, if you could please swear.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please give your name and address.
And please, talk into the microphone.
Carol Healy, one three two nine zero Mustang.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to inquire because I do a lot of walking. We have an intersection on Mustang and Hollity that people continuously just drive right through. There's a lot of traffic going to the home where these people presently live. I under... I'm under the impression it's a daycare. But I'm just curious to know what will become of that home when they build this home. I don't know if that's appropriate to ask, but...
Sure.
But it'd be nice to have an answer.
Sure. State your name, please, when you come up.
My name is Naida Gomez, Naida Padron, and I'm the owner of the property. The daycare that we have over there is the horses that we use to make the big difference in the family with special needs kids. This is the daycare that we have. And we invite more than one time to the person that start close, included David. And you are very welcome. If you are here to help the people, then you are very welcome to come into the sixty-six twenty Hollity Trail. Okay? This is the third house that we have three houses in Southwest Ranches. We start like my daughter say nineteen ninety-eight. We work very hard in our business. We don't need to have nothing like that, like he say, okay? But we are very forced to give you the sample of my daughter to say that when you need something, you need to go for that. Okay? The daycare and the traffic is because we are exemption agriculture, because we have over there horses that we need to take care. For the Saturdays, we invite everybody here to go with us, to go over there to see what is that we doing. This is the traffic that we have. And Julio know us for a long time, and exactly he knows who are we are. We are know a people that maybe we don't have money, but we are the intention in our heart to help every people that pass over there and have the situation with the kids. Because it's very difficult to have special needs kids at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is a se... That's the house that we're living in now, and legally, it used to be a home preschool, which was approved by you guys, by DCF and everything. That lasted three years, and that started in twenty eighteen, and it's not currently there anymore. Does that answer the question? It's another property, though. It's not sixty-six twenty. It's where we currently live right now, seven one 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 Hollity Trail. It used to be a legal called First Steps Learning Center. That used to be a home preschool legal. We went through you guys, we went through DCF. I believe that's what you're referring to. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I, you know, being a resident of the area, I have seen the services that they put on Sunday mornings, and it is what they say it is. Now, one of the concerns that I did have, and, you know, I'm gonna support this. But one of the concerns that I did have is outside of the driveway that they're using, when they were bringing in the fill for what is now the horse area that they're gonna be transitioning into the residence, there were so many dump trucks coming in and out and in and out that that road, that Hollity Trail there, is destroyed. And they were... Those dump trucks were actually going into the neighbor across the street into their property and running over their sprinklers so much that they had to put six by six pieces of wood to keep the dump trucks from running over there. But that road in front of that driveway is just absolutely destroyed from those dump trucks. And now that we're going to be resurfacing Hollity Trail, that's... Those trucks coming in and out with construction is a concern of mine because, you know, we worked really hard to get these roads surfaced. But in the end, I am going to support this.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Any other comments?
Yeah, I hear... This is really convoluted, and it's getting more convoluted as time moves on here. I don't understand why they wouldn't seek unity of title. That solves a lot of the problems right there. It's obviously being used as a rental. I think there should be some conditions of approval in here, like the rental needs to cease in ninety days or something like that. Unity of title should be considered. And, you know, and properties need to be homesteaded probably within a year, within eighteen months or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm fine with the wording as far as not having it being a rental. I'm a hundred percent fine with that. I think the key to it is the homestead. I think that's an excellent suggestion. That gives the assurance that this is going to be two families living there, exactly what they're saying they're gonna do, and it... They don't seem to have any objection to that, which makes me think that everything that they are presenting to us is real. The fact of the matter is, you know, when we talk about this, what... Where all this discussion came from was a concern, a valid concern. I'm not minimizing the concern. A valid concern that people were just profiteering from the property, splitting it, turning it over to some sort of a developer to then sell it off and make a bundle and leave town. And what we're trying to protect and started protection back in two thousand and two, when this was first brought up, was families that grew up in the ranches trying to pass on properties to their children so that the next generation could appreciate the same things that we appreciated with our families. If this group doesn't fall into that category, then I don't know who does. Certainly, this property, the way it's divided up, is wacky. I'll give you that. It's the strangest one I've ever seen. But at the end of the day, the way they're using it, I can't... It's as good as I've seen any. So, and we're, you know, they agreed to the five years. I mean, that's awesome. They agreed to the homestead, that's awesome. The unity of title is ridiculous to me. They don't... That's not what they came up here to do. That gives us no more... I don't see any more assurance that. That just looks like another hoop that they gotta jump through for what reason, I have no idea. This, I think, is exactly why the council back in two thousand and two created the waiver of platting for exactly this type of situation. And I, I, you know, I'm a hundred percent for it. I'm proud that somebody that here is in the ranches, you know, they want to raise their family and their kids here, too. And why we as a council would stand in the way of that, I cannot fathom. So I'll leave it there.
Let me throw something out. I don't know enough about unity of title to make a decision on that. Keith seems to be persuaded that it's a good idea. They have... Hold on, hold on. They have the option to withdraw tonight and come back with that as a different type of a proposal or just march on the way they are now, the way they intend on doing it. So they have that choice. I don't know if we want to throw that out, that they can either withdraw and come back after they've reconsidered or finish up tonight. It's their call. Again, I don't know.
No, I just want to just respond for a second. I, and I'll say, Councilmember Jablonski turned to me and said, "How can we ensure what they're saying that they're gonna do is going to occur?" So my response was, the only way to guarantee something like that is a... Some sort of unification, a document in the public records that says that this... These two homes will always be owned by a family unit, meaning related families. And that's why I brought that up, to respond to his point on how do we ensure the story they're telling us will come to fruition and will be guaranteed. And at the same venue, and Andy would say the same thing, we're never in favor of deed restricting to prevent someone from selling their property within X amount of years. I think that's a potentially, in this case, an unfair restriction because you never know what someone may have to do in life, and to have to hold on to a property may not be the wisest thing. So instead, what we were saying, get rid of that five-year deed restriction on no sales, and just say you can sell it provided that you're selling it to another family exactly like you, where it would essentially be, you know, related individuals living in those two homes. So my response was directly to a question to... That I was asked, not saying that you should do it. I was just responding to the question on how you could guarantee that to occur.
Thank you. Why should they have that restriction to not be able to sell their property to somebody else? What makes that property so much different than any other two-acre property in town that has the ability to sell it to whoever wants to buy that two-acre property? Why are we singling them out that they have to sell it as a four-acre property? They have to... Think how that reduces the number of...
Buyers.
Potential buyers that could... Now they have to find...
It's more complicated.
It's... Why we're doing this, I'm at a loss. I'm honestly, sincerely, I'm not exaggerating. I am honestly, sincerely at a loss. I think this is exactly what we want residents of Southwest Ranches to do. We have no guarantees about the future. We have no guarantees. Anything could happen on any piece of property, and it could be sold for in any period of time, you know? And this is no different. I... I'm very comfortable with this. Matter of fact, I think what this does is it takes a property that has had, you know, a checkered past, and it lays the foundation for a couple of homes that will be good ranchers for years to come. Will be cleaned up, the rental is gone, the, you know, will have some of the things, the trailers and things like that. It's different when you live there, right? So all that, I think a lot of those things that have happened in the past should go away. I think that this will be good for that part of town. I think it'll be good for those owners. I think it's a win-win for everybody, and I'm... I think it's... I'm excited to vote yes for this, let me put it that way.
Jeff, what are all the conditions again? If you don't mind.
Sure.
That we've got so far.
The... Number one is recordation of an easement creating the... Excuse me. Recordation of an easement agreement to create the ingress-egress easement so that the landlocked lot has access and provides for maintenance. Removal of any remaining non-performing structures on track B. And then the two I was proposing is similar to the last one you approved. The fifty-three fifty-three Hancock, you approved it subject to a deed restriction, that the property not be sold or conveyed to other parties within three years. So in this case, going off the feedback I was getting from council, I was proposing that neither parcel be sold or transferred for forty-eight months. That was the number that was given to me as desired and agreed to by the petitioner. That neither residents... That the residences would be homesteaded, and that neither residents could be rented once... Or for the period, for the forty-eight months or the sixty months or whatever council wanted. But that neither resident could be rented once the new home was built. Because at that point, the parents would move it, would start renovating the other house, and it would be no more rental. And that was... Those were the... That was the language I was suggesting.
Thank you. I'm okay with pretty much everything that he said except the rental part. I think that needs to cease in a reasonable amount of time because we may be twenty-four months from building.
I'm good with that.
You know, I think I've...
I'm good with that.
Guys, hundred and twenty days.
I'm good with that, hundred and twenty days.
They said it was month to month.
Yeah.
What works for them.
I don't want to... I don't want to create a hardship, but it's...
Right.
Kind of same self-imposed.
Let's verify that that's okay. Hundred and twenty days.
The applicant has acknowledged formally the one twenty. I need a date on the homestead if you choose to go with that.
Yeah, that's one of the conditions that they...
No, I need a...
Want to make it the same time that the renting has to cease.
Say that again, please.
Give it the hundred and...
That's not possible.
Oh, let's write it. Yeah, it does take the next year, that's right.
No.
What... I mean, I don't know what all goes into that. I mean, I assume you have to... Does the house have to be built and CO'd at that time?
No, the second house will have to be built and CO'd to get a homestead. But for the first house, the renter would have to leave. The new person would have to come in and apply for a homestead, which would go on next year's determination. So if you were to ask me, I'd say within eighteen months of this approval, that property will be homesteaded in the name of the applicant.
Both properties?
No, the second one won't be built yet.
Oh, I was assuming that it'd be done in eighteen months.
I didn't. I don't know if they can build it. But then you can say with the X amount of months after the second home is built, that it will have a homestead as well. So you just gotta put timeframes in your resolution for it to be valid, so...
So if we said eighteen months on the current house and twelve months after the CO on the...
Perfect.
And Jeff, I did have the issue about the last trailer, that boat to be removed. I think that was kind of important, too.
Right. And the petitioner assured me that that is gone and will not be coming back. And they are nodding in agreement.
Okay, just for the record, Mayor, if I may restate where we're at.
Please do, Keith.
So the items that the council has agreed upon is both parcels will receive its homestead. The first parcel, the currently existing parcel, will receive a homestead in the applicant, the property owner's name, within eighteen months from today's date. The second home will receive its homestead in the second applicant's name within twelve months of the date they receive their CO. The rental of the existing house will terminate within a hundred and twenty days of today's date. The town will go in and inspect and ensure that no one is living there, and that the property owner has agreed that once they move into both properties, which will be the day of the homestead, that no sale will occur within forty-eight months thereafter.
I'm good with that.
I am, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, are we good?
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion that we pass this with all the conditions that were just stated.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Deborah, if you could please call the question.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. The next item is public comment. We have anyone?
No, we don't have any speaker cards.
Cards for public comment. Okay. Any board reports?
No chair.
Seeing none, moving right along. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
All righty.
Surprise. I'll make it quick. I know Jim was leaning into the mic, but I beat him. Just a couple of quick announcements. The contest for the Country Estates Park entrance, the submittals need to be in by the fifteenth of November. The Holiday Lights Decoration Contest needs to be in by the third of December. Just item of note, Broward County Property Appraisal will be here on the eighteenth from ten to two, or ten to twelve. And we're going to have, apparently, the car show is coming back for the Parks Foundation on the fourth, and it's supposed to be a Chili Fest, so we'll see.
Are you entering?
I just found out about it like ten minutes, probably ten minutes before the meeting.
Because if you are, I'm not. Fourth of?
Huh?
Fourth of? What month?
December fourth.
December fourth.
From ten to four, and I'll probably be in. Just for fun.
All right.
You know. I may disqualify myself, so, you know, then just serve chili, you know, at that point. So just wanted to bring that. And just, I want to close on this note. I want to thank Russell, Andy, Marty, and Rich for all their hard work on the budget. You know, ladies and gentlemen, they make it look so easy.
They do.
It's not. It's a tremendous amount of work. Everybody out there has to start in, you know, January for the next year. They're submitting their requests and moving on. And I just want the general public to know that we really, really appreciate it because there was a time when this didn't happen. And we don't ever want to go back to that. And they do do an outstanding job, so I just want everybody... And they do just do an outstanding job, so I just want everybody, you know, a little recognition here. And I just want to mention that we are, Russell and I are working on a project right now. I, I don't want to give too much of it away right now, but it'll be a real benefit to our, it deals with fill, and it'll be a real benefit to our residents that want to bring in the, the first level, level one fill. We're trying to put together a tutorial.
Oh, nice.
And yours truly is the guinea pig.
Really?
So it'll be a real world, real world examples, you know, putting it all together will be step one, step two, step three, step, and we'll present it at a future town council meeting, and then it'll, where to go from there, we don't know yet, but, you know, it's a work in progress right now. But I just wanted to announce that we're, we're doing that, it's gonna be a whole, sort of like Marty's PowerPoint
Yeah.
But without Marty, so it'll be, it'll be
I don't know, it's starting to sound like a reality TV show to me, I don't know.
Yeah, it's getting, it's getting there, but, you know, I, I just got to the point after, I, I got extremely frustrated when I heard what one of our residents out west, Debbie Green, what she went through.
Yeah.
And I, I kind of pitched a fit about that with, with Andy and Rod, and, and they responded by getting ahold of Broward County, and they're going through a new process now, where they use LiDAR, if you know what that is, it's a laser, laser radiation type radar, where, and they supposedly have the wetlands mapped out for that, we're, we're in the process of finding that, finding that out in our, in our discovery part here right now, and putting it all together. So my criteria for putting this together was if you're an 80-year-old grandmother or a 14-year-old kid, you should be able to follow these steps and make it happen. I, I wanted to simplify it to that much in an effort to stop the illegal fill by making it easier to get
To do it right.
To do it correctly.
Perfect.
You know, so that's my goal.
Perfect.
Whether or not I get there is another story, but we're working on it.
Awesome.
So, just want to throw that out there, okay? And you'll see that coming up here, probably in the next month or so.
Great.
Okay, and that's it, I close, Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you, thank you, Gary, that's fantastic.
I just have two quick comments.
Okay, Bob.
One is just a reminder for those who are doing the Broward Water Leaders Academy, that starts tomorrow, and there's four sessions over about the next six months. I'm looking forward to seeing what they're doing for climate change issues. They tend to talk about the east side of the county when it comes to climate change, because of the coastal areas, but the water comes from that way, too, so I'm very interested on how they're gonna continue to manage our future. The other thing is, I'm not sure if either of you have been to Broward Days in the past.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so Broward Days is coming up on January the 17th through the 20th. I went two years ago, and it was very interesting and informative, and as well, we'll have an opportunity to talk about some of our needs to some of the, the players that can make them happen. One of the hot topics that was in vogue two years ago was public adjusters and their impact on our insurance bills. That's one I want to revisit. We got, we've had, we've been with AAA for 10 years, and, you know, insurance goes up every year a little bit. We got the bill today, it's gone up by three grand. And when I start talking to my wife, who is an insurance claims adjuster for homeowners, it's all about one thing, and it's a, it's a group that has gone into the industry now, and is increasing the costs on an annual basis 30 to 40 percent for the insurance companies. Now, we haven't had a bad hurricane here in a long time. If that group is inserted in all those future claims, we'll have most of the insurance companies in Florida go out of business like they did with Andrew when they couldn't handle the, the amount of claims. So that's something personally I'd like to discuss and bring up there, to, you know, the legislators, but I'd like to go, and I'm not sure who else would like to go, but Andy would need to make, yeah, would need to make hotel reservations, and maybe we can rent a van and drive up together, or fly, I mean, it's a little cheaper
I'd rather fly.
Sorry?
I'd rather fly, to be honest with you.
So would I, but I'm just trying to save some money.
Yeah, I, I was, I was gonna
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. My mistake, go ahead.
I was gonna say, yeah, that was, I was gonna bring that up, my comments as well, I'm, I'm, I'm planning on going up there.
Okay.
Heard some feedback on some things that we need to talk about up there, so I was, I am planning on going up there. I, I, I would need to fly, I've gotta be back the next day, so
I'm fine flying.
So just, uh
It's a long drive, I used to do it once a quarter.
Yeah, I've, I've driven it before, but I, I am planning on going up there, and so I think the, if we can have a good presence up there, that would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, can, as long as we're on top, can I just get a show of hands, or just who wants to go or not go?
On the fence, I don't know
What happened?
On the fence.
All right, four and a half?
Are you gonna go?
Okay, thank you.
So it looks like all of us?
Four and a half. I'm not
Four and a half, all right, all right, I want to see that, see how that works out.
Which half is going?
All right.
Up, down, left, right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I may, first of all, several of you folks know Robin Ditzian, does a lot of pet watching. Her mother's undergoing some really serious surgery, so I'd just like to have you keep caring, in your thoughts and prayers. She's expected to come through, but it, it has to do with her throat, and she's probably not gonna be able to talk, so, she kind of shared that with me. I want to thank the Comp Plan Committee last night for the items that were passed, I think a lot of those are good issues, and that kind of dovetails into thanking Marty and Richard and you folks for doing a good job with the budget, that we can say, hey, you're doing a good job with the budget, we can focus on these real important land use issues that we were elected to do. And we, we know that, okay, Marty, you've done a great job, we can trust you with that, and as opposed to like items in the past where I've heard it, you know, it was up in the air sometimes, so feel really good about what happened last night. And then, closing with, the bid deadlines are project, projects for drainage and country estates, and the roads, and most of the roads in Sunshine Ranches that are being resurfaced, those bid deadlines are coming up, and those will be awarded, and we're gonna get some really good work done for the town. That wraps it up for me.
Thank you, David. Hey, Jim.
Gary thought I was gonna go first, but I was gonna name Gary first. Mayor, council, staff, residents, great to see everybody here with their mask on. I have two things this evening to talk about, one is kind of not so happy, and the other one I'm very excited about. Can you hear me all right? The first being, almost 700,000 people have died in the United States as of today, I looked it up, it's at a rate of 1,900 people per day. Now, if you take that 1,900 people per day, our town of Southwest Ranches would be gone in less than a week. Just think about it.
Is it more than just lost?
Yes, yes, the flu, the pandemic, and so forth, right. Of course, there were fewer people there also, and the medicine wasn't as good, but I am going Monday, I had to wait till Monday, this next Monday, to get my third shot, and I, I just encourage you to think about it, I see you wearing your mask, and I appreciate everyone of you wearing your mask, whether you're vaccinated or not, it's a great thing, but if we can get a handle on this, we can control it like we did Polio and like we did smallpox, but we've got to get a handle on it. Football games scare me, tennis matches scare me, you see thousands of people there with no mask. You can't stop it if it got, if it's got a host to go to, if there's no host to go to, you can stop it. So that's the bad stuff. I have an announcement I'm very excited about, but before that announcement, I want to make one special thank you to Andy, our town administrator, for all his help and time that allows me to make this announcement. I think most of you know that I campaigned heavily about traffic and safety, and we do have the police out there now really enforcing the traffic, but as of January, we are gonna start a public safety and trans, transportation, or public tra, public safety and traffic committee, like I, like I spoke about during my campaign. It'll run for six months, and, and I'd like for each of the councilmen to nominate somebody for that committee, and they're gonna sit and brainstorm on ways that we can slow down the traffic, divert, cut through traffic, and stop some of the small crimes that take place in this town, mailbox theft and so forth. It'll sunset, like I said, in June, but this is a great thing for the community to come together, and we can tell people, they'll listen to you and, and the, and the residents, they won't listen to Jeff or myself when we tell them to lock the cars, but when their neighbor tells them to lock the cars, they'll do it. So I am very, very pleased, Andy, for your help in doing this, so we're looking forward to this new committee in January. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. And thanks for your work on that, that's fantastic. It certainly was one of the major things that during the campaign that's always comes out, so it's good to see that, and appreciate you guys partnering on that. Andy, along those lines, maybe if you can, I know that they would not have requested for this particular committee, but I'd like to see the applications for committee memberships that people have submitted, say in the last couple of years, just to kind of refresh me of some names that maybe we can contact that may want to consider being on this committee. Aside from that, you all did a great job of covering the items I wanted to cover, so good job there. I'll just do quick thank yous to the Comp Plan Board, and frankly, I just throw it out to this whole council that, you know, we made a commitment a year ago, that we were gonna be serious about protecting our rural lifestyle, and, and promoting that, and making some substantial changes, so that going forward for future generations, this place would be protected more than it's ever been before. And, you know, that's, that is happening, we've already done a lot, but there's a lot more in the works, and it's happening, and it's exciting to see, so appreciate the support of the residents that have allowed that to happen, and appreciate all the work from the council and the administration to make that happen. And the only other thing I was gonna touch on was Broward Days, I'm excited to go up there, we've got some big things going on, that it's important for us to kind of make sure everyone understands that, you know, this money will be put to good use, and that we have some other issues, some legislation that is important for us to weigh in on, so I'm excited for that. All right. And then councilmember comments, any legal comments?
Sure, Mayor, first, to the council, wear masks in Tallahassee. 1898, the United States acquired Puerto Rico after the Spanish-American War, they've been citizens of America since 1917, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yeah.
Puerto Ricans are US citizens, because an improper comment was made, and I just didn't want to let that go. In regards to other direct legal comments, as you all are aware, we had a shade session the other night, I'm pleased to advise that the Myers family accepted the settlement agreement that was broached that evening. As a result, we are drafting that settlement agreement, for purposes of the record, it was a very complex code issue where a fine was determined, and they've accepted the fine to proceed. In the case relating to the town of Southwest Ranches versus Pembroke Pines, relating to the CCA property, that case is coming forward to the court on October 11th, our, our first hearings start before the judge on October 7th. As we get closer and closer to trial, even though it's been going on for 10 years, we're finally getting some discussions from Pines with potential interest, to see if they can work out a, a deal or a settlement deal with the town. The, Andy has had an open dialogue and communication directly with their city manager, there is nothing to bring forward completely yet, because it's still in the throwing out ideas phase, but they got a week and a half to get real, if, if they are interested in selling, settling, and if the commission is willing to do so. As a result, and just as a backstop, I would ask you all to check your calendars, because I would like to put on the record now, because we're not meeting again, to put on a, a shade session on October 4th at, at 6:00 PM, I think that's what I discussed with Andy, just to have it out there, if it's necessary to have a, a discussion about any settlement offer made in that case. If there's nothing that comes to fruition, we will cancel that item, but in accordance with Florida law, we have to announce a shade session at a scheduled council meeting, so this is the only time I'd be able to do so. So, does that work for everyone?
Monday?
It's Monday.
Monday.
Can, can we make that 6:30?
Absolutely.
Because 6 o'clock is really, really tough for me.
Not a problem, it was
You wouldn't strike that after? That was 10:04, right?
10:04 at 6:30, if it works with everyone.
That's also country estates that night, and I actually have to make a presentation that night.
How about 6:05?
Say again?
6:05.
Charter revision.
Charter revision, I see that.
I'm sorry, 10:05, sorry.
10:05.
Yeah. I was thinking 6:30, sorry.
I mean, we could do, are you expecting a half hour, an hour?
I would suspect an hour, if there is something that comes to fruition.
And maybe we can do it, David, I don't know if this works for you, but maybe we can do it at 6 o'clock on the Tuesday.
6 o'clock just period is really, really hard, coming out of Miami.
Country estates?
I am do, well, I'll, I'll talk to Debbie, but I mean, that'll be tomorrow when I talk to Debbie.
No, I would have to do it
I'm doing the sign presentation.
Yeah, I just think this is pretty important. I think both are important.
We could do a 10:07 as well.
Yeah, how far are you along?
I'm trying, Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have nothing scheduled for 10:07, at least I don't have it on my calendar.
Would 10:07 at 6:30 work?
That's Thursday?
That's Thursday.
I'm, I'm good.
Wow, that's cutting close.
Yeah, I'm afraid that's too close. I know, I get you, I get you.
I think we need to stick with the Monday
I do.
And let the chips fall anywhere.
I think so.
I mean, I'm not opposed to coming in on a Sunday if you want to do a 10:03.
Right.
That's easier.
I'm okay with that.
That's easier.
If that works for the council, we can do it any time.
That's what we gotta do.
Assuming there's not a dolphin here.
Well, assume we have to have one.
Hold on, let me just
Dolphins would be losing again, so
Yeah.
I don't know.
Give me five seconds, only because legally we have to do it at this meeting, or I wouldn't even
Yeah, that's a good thought.
Say it. No, there's actually, uh
We have to include the dolphin.
Oh, so we could do it in the evening on 10:07, on 10, sorry, on 10:03. So what time works for everyone, 6, 6:30, 7?
Six.
Anyone?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so Andy, does that work for you if we do 10:03 at 6:00 PM?
We'll make it work, I'll make it work.
Okay, so for purposes of the record, on, on October 6th at 6:00 PM, uh
October 6th?
I'm sorry, I'm doing it again. October 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Sunday, October 3rd, 6:00 PM.
The town council will have a shade session to discuss the case involving the town of Southwest Ranches versus Pembroke Pines, we will notice it and advertise it for that day, if nothing comes to fruition, that meeting will be canceled. Other than that, no further legal comments.
Charter, I'm like, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question, if I could, before you go on.
Yep.
I did want to ask the council if they would grant me permission to be the council liaison for that committee, and in doing so, I would waive for that committee, and in doing so, I would waive the $100,000 salary. Thank you.
I think that might be all right.
Thank you.
Any objections from anyone?
Hey, it's your ball, run with it.
Yep. All right, Andy, all yours.
All right, thank you. I'll see you all on October 3rd for that session. I'm not going to wear a suit to that one.
Okay.
Just going to tell you now. I met with Charlie Dodge as recently as this morning. We had a very good discussion. He followed that up with an email this afternoon, so we're certainly, I guess for the first time in a long time, actually have some true back and forth. I don't know if we're going to be able to get to where we need to get to, but we'll make every effort to get there and certainly I'll continue on that path and look forward to going over all this information with you. Other than that, Mayor, I don't have anything else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. All right, item number nine, ordinance for second reading.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the 10-year water supply facilities work plan, the WSFWP, and adopting, implementing amendments to the goals, objectives, and policies of the utilities element and capital improvements element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, authorizing transmittal of the 10-year WSFWP and related comprehensive plan amendments to reviewing agencies, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Just Mayor, for the record, items 9, 10, and 11 are all on second reading of ordinances. So generally doing that, legally you just incorporate into the record all the comments made on first reading onto second, it's more of a perfunctory reading, so it's here for your consideration.
Thank you, Keith. Is there any comments, questions on this item?
Great job on this, Jeff. I always learn something when I read it.
Are we putting all three of them together?
No, 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 no. We're just including the comments, the previous comments for those three items.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions, comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Deborah, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 10.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, Article 45 Agriculture and Rural Districts, Section 045-030 General Provisions, to regulate the location of new businesses engaged in commercial retail sales of plants on plots and portions of plots that are not farms, no agricultural property tax classification, and to provide for nonconforming uses, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any comments, questions on this item from the council?
Yeah, just a quick one. This is something that's been in the works for how many years now, three years?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
You were the chair of the Comp Plan Board and sat through a lot of this.
Yep.
And it was a huge challenge. I mean, it went, this thing went in directions I don't think anybody ever anticipated. And Steve, I want to congratulate you and thank you for your leadership on this because we didn't get anywhere for two and a half of those four years, three of those four years until you became mayor, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting this back on track, and I think we've now got a good ordinance in place.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It has been a journey. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I agree very much with Mr. Hartman on this. It took your leadership to push this through. Great job, great job.
Really appreciate that. Thank you.
I think it's also something to be said that there are not a lot of ag people here with pitchforks and torches.
Yeah, I think we had, we did, it was, we were able to get everybody around the table, get everybody's input, and end up with something that works for our town, so yeah, it's encouraging. Thank you. All right, let me open up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none.
That says a lot.
Public comment is closed. Any further comment from the council? Seeing none, Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Absolutely.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, item number 11.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, Article 45 Agriculture and Rural Districts, 045-030 General Provisions by creating subsection X to prohibit the conversion of a single-family dwelling for nonresidential use without first obtaining a special exception use permit, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Maybe we can spend a minute and explain this.
Yeah, so this is also along the same lines of protecting the rural nature of our town. The kind of the poster child for this particular issue is that the structure that's right next door, which was a residential home, and because of, well, its location and just other uses, it ended up being purchased and converted from a home into a business. And so what this is, the intention of this is to not allow that to happen any longer. I know in country estates, we have one there, there was a home there that was, that is, on 186th, and it was converted years ago into a business, a retail business, and then about a year and a half ago, it moved to the next house next door. That same business then bought the next house and it converted that house into part of the business. So what this protects is that domino or creeping of the retail businesses into our residential neighborhoods, and it's key to be able to protect our rural lifestyle. So I'm thrilled that it's coming forward and it's on second reading. Any comments, questions from the council?
Great leadership, Mr. Mayor. Great leadership.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I appreciate all, everything from the residents, the comp board, a lot of folks went into this, so it's good stuff. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Deborah, please.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good stuff.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
We have a zoning in progress currently.
Yeah.
How do we end that, or do we?
It was just ended.
Is it, when it, okay.
Is that the official ending of it?
Okay, awesome. All right.
Leadership, good job, good job, Steve, good job.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is big for our town.
Yes, it is.
This is something we've been trying to do for a long time, to protect the ability so that our town stays rural, stays, you know, to where people, when they buy into our town and they get that piece of heaven that you get when you move to Southwest Ranches, this ensures that a Home Depot doesn't move in right next door to you and destroy that. That's what this does. And it's critical, and I couldn't be more excited to see it, see it. Now it's the law of the land, so it's good stuff. All right, item number 12.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency and other review agencies defined in Florida statute 163 dot 13814 1C, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I have a motion on this item?
Motion approved.
I got two motions. There's a second, there we go.
Bingo.
Thanks, okay.
Sorry, didn't hear the other one.
Is there any comments, questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Deborah, please.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 13.
Mayor, items 13 and 14 are the ones that came to you with the recommendation denial from the local planning agency. If you want, we can read them both into the record together, and then you can dispose of them simultaneously.
And to, if we stay with the recommendation of the local planning agency, do we once again look for a motion to deny?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Deborah, if you can read those into the record.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the definition of guest house in the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, Council, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to deny.
I think we're going to read in 14.
Oh, both of them, sorry.
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 45 Agriculture and Rural Districts, Section 045-030 General Provisions, to authorize guest homes of the same size of all plots of 35,000 square feet and larger, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
Motion to decline or deny.
Deny.
Second.
All right. Any comments, questions on this item?
Just the questions I had before, Mayor. We will address this at a later time when we can study it and look at it, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. Andy, that's, let's make sure that's, okay. All right, any other comments? Any, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Deborah, please.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number 15.
Item number 15 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of unimproved road easement recorded in OR Book 19831, page 475 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, being a portion of track 64 in section 34, Township 50 South, Range 39 East, Everglades Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book two, page one of the Public Records of Miami-Dade County, said lands lying and being in the town of Southwest Ranches, Broward County, Florida, generally described as a portion of Southwest 54th Place, between Southwest 207 Terrace and Southwest 208 Lane, and a portion of Southwest 207 Terrace extending approximately 650 feet north of Southwest 54th Place, authorizing the preparation and execution of effectuating documents, providing instructions to the town clerk, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Awesome, great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any comments on this?
We want to have Jeff attending this, or?
Who's presenting this item?
Who's, Jeff, is this you or Keith?
It's not me. I'll present it if you wish.
Can you give just the background on it, Jeff?
Sure. The background is the petitioners, the martels are applying to vacate a portion of a road easement that's in the form of an L shape, part of its 54th Place, and part of it is the 207th Terrace alignment. It is a road easement. It's not platted. It was dedicated by separate instrument. In 1992, Broward County asked Mary Catherine Boyett, who's now Mary Catherine Boyett Martell, to dedicate this, this property for a future road, and obviously, there's, there's, there's not going to be a road there by, in any of our sensibilities. 54th Place has excess right-of-way north of the center line right now, and I shouldn't say right-of-way, carter width, because some of it's easement, some of it's right-of-way. There's 40 feet north of the center line, and obviously, typically, there's an equal amount ultimately on the north and the south side of the center, center line. We require 25 feet, they have 40. They're seeking to vacate the difference, but right now, that 25-foot half-section north of the center line is 10 feet of platted right-of-way and 15 feet of road easement. So didn't even have to ask them. They included it in their application to dedicate that 15 feet as right-of-way, so we have a full 25-foot right-of-way half-section. That's essentially the application. We noted in the staff report that vacations are legislative function and that we don't find any public purpose for maintaining these easements, and we recommend two conditions. Number one, the petitioner dedicate a minimum 10-foot drainage easement in place of the vacated road easement along 54th Place, just given the, the north of center road alignment. We wanted to provide a little extra drainage there. And number two, the dedication of the 15 feet for right-of-way on 54th, which they, you know, had already offered in their application. That wraps it up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Does the pending motion include those two stipulations?
That's what I was just going to ask, do we need to modify the motion?
Are those, I think we do. We need to include those stipulations on the motion.
I made the motion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I modify it with those conditions.
You agree to that?
I second.
Part of the motion. Thanks for catching that. Any other questions, comments?
Come here. This gives the property back to their owners it started with. They gave it to the county as a road. In the future, it's not, and we're just giving them the land back.
That's right.
Correct?
That's right.
Very simple.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Yep. Any public comment on this item?
Well, Hollingsworth, 199 Avenue. The 10-foot drainage easements, can it be stipulated that they will maintain them? Because it'll be almost impossible for the town to maintain them. Also, they butt up to Pembroke Pines on that section, and could we get a no-drive line on that property on the east so that there's not a cut through onto the road that is in Pembroke Pines causing trouble and the drainage easement also in that area?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Lance Martell, we own the property. I guess you've changed it to 207 now instead of 208 Avenue. 30 years ago, well, I bought it in 89, but when I started to get my permit, I tried to give them 208 Lane. They told me, no, they're going to build a road on 209 straight through. I'm going to build a, I said, there's a lake in there, so you're not going to build one down there. I paved from 54th all the way to what was then the Jehovah Witness Church. I, I built that road or paved it. That's why they, they wanted 208. I said, you're never going to get it. The, the church up there has right-of-way, that's only full of water. I guess that doesn't make any difference. The former mayor asked me, first, I had a problem that you tried to take my lands or not, 208, I own that on both sides, and that you maintained that road and yet you were taking it, which was not true. I came to the meeting, you never maintained it for anything. The former mayor asked me to give that, to take that piece of property, and I agreed to it. I only think it's fair, since you're not going to do anything on 207 now, to give that back to us as original. That's all we're asking for.
Gotcha.
You know? I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any appetite for any changes? I think I'm pretty comfortable with the way it is.
Good.
All right. Closed public comment. Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed with stipulations mentioned.
Great, thank you. Item number 16.
Item number 16 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of unimproved 49th Street right-of-way, recorded in OR Book 38262, page 1888 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, being a portion of parcel B, Alderman parcels, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book 172, page 12, of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, generally described as a portion of Southwest 49th Street extending 330 feet on either side of Southwest 192nd Terrace, authorizing the preparation and execution of effectuating documents, providing instructions to the town clerk, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
So moved.[1783.24]
Second.
Thank you. Jeff, maybe you can give us a quick rundown on this property as well.
Sure, very briefly, this is a stretch of unimproved 49th Street that has a 70-foot right-of-way section where our total corridor width, where we, again, we only need 50. That is, if the road even ever goes anywhere. But with this vacation, there's still a full corridor remaining that would meet our local road standards if the town ever did want to extend a road in there or a trail for that matter. There's a sufficient corridor width. It doesn't connect to anything. A lot of this corridor, the remainder of 49th, are easements that don't show up. If you look at, I know I've had questions. They look at BCPA, and they don't see where the rest of the corridor width is. But it's, they're easements that lie within properties on the other side, south of this right-of-way. And so the corridor is there. We do recommend one condition, and that condition is that prior to second reading of the ordinance, that the Vargasys, if I pronounced your name right, sir, shall execute a deed restriction deemed acceptable as deformed by the town attorney, prohibiting a second home from being constructed on any part of that property. And that's simply because of a stated policy of the council not to vacate rights-of-way for the purpose of enabling subdivision. This property, as it stands, when it gets the 20 feet back, cannot be subdivided. There's not enough land. But this is just to ensure that that little strip from somewhere else isn't, you know, isn't obtained and then used for subdivision.
Gotcha. Okay. So I think we need to adjust the motion in second for the stipulation that was...
No problem. I accept.
Great.
I'm fine.
Good. All right, any further comments?
I did have some concerns about this property. I'm aware of it. This is within my district, and it's part of, I guess, what's traditionally called Christie's Ranches. When you look at the picture here, there's excavation work going on. The land has been cleared. And when I looked through the property appraisers' records, it's been being filled for about three years now, since 19, since 18. So I had Andy take a look at it, and there was a fill permit that had expired. They've renewed it, so I have no issues with that.
Okay, good. Any other comments, questions on this item? Any public comment on this item? I don't think your mic's... Something's happened to the mic there.
No.
Way to go, Noel. You killed it.
Man, that's it.
Noel, do you really need to speak?
There.
Noel without a microphone.
Just speak really loudly and we'll pick you up.
I think we can still hear you on mine.
Yeah.
If I was looking at it correctly, it's got a cul-de-sac that's proposed on lot 1, 2, 3. If you vacate the entire lane, you cut the road, you also cut the right-hand edge of the drainage. Also, if you take care of it, it's one and three, lots one and three, make sure that that is cut, lot two becomes an orphan, and there is no way to get to it because you have now cut it with a piece of property that owns there. You've got to leave the rest for that road, not vacate that section for the road, and then mandatoryize that the property, number two, goes to build. Lot and three will build their section of the road at that time so that we don't have a dirt road going to a little piece of property that is then paved down there for lot two. Do you understand what I was trying to say?
I didn't get any. I didn't get it.
Lot and three, if they build and they have that easement cuts the road, therefore, you can't cross that property to get to where the road 20 foot further is. They have that right to block it off.
Yeah, it's a cul-de-sac.
Lot two would then be isolated completely from being able to get in and out. So leave that one section underneath the road and then say as part of this agreement that when lot two is built, lot one and three will build their section of the road. Otherwise, it is possible we'll end up with a dirt road down to lot two where they have payments only on that lot two section and a part of the cul-de-sac that they own.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you recommending that we don't allow the easement vacation on the dotted line basically where the cul-de-sac road goes back?
Correct.
Just basically give it on lot one off the road and then on lot three off the road.
Correct. And also, take a look at the right-hand corner, and you'll see where that you're vacating part, and it's a drainage easement.
The drainage easement wouldn't go... We're vacating the road.
Jeff, that's 192nd, right?
But you're also vacating the drainage easement there, too. That's part of that 20-foot is.
Noel, from a legal standpoint, I'm going to jump in and ask a question. The whole goal of this is to extend 192nd to move the cul-de-sac between lots three and two. So that where you see the cul-de-sac, it's just moving it from its existing location into the area where lot?
That is not shown at all on this, on what was published.
I'm just going to make a suggestion that we hear public comments and let the applicant address all this. I believe I understand what Noel's saying, and I can respond to it. But I think I'd rather have the petitioner respond.
Let's do that. Thank you, Noel.
I'm not getting what he's saying.
Hey, Jane.
Yes. Hi, everybody. Forgot to be back. Good evening. Jane Storms, Police Lands Surveyors, 5381 Nob Hill Road. The question that you're, actually, when council had approved...
Could you speak louder, please? Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I know. When council had approved, wow.
Much louder.
Wow. When council had approved the note amendment to split this lot into the three, during that, in that resolution is a, it's condition of approval that the owner had to build that road with the cul-de-sac all the way up as it's depicted in the sketch before they got the CO for the first house. And the first house is going to be lot three.
Doesn't the easement, the 50-foot secret secret easement created to serve those lots, doesn't extend all the way
Yeah.
through the right-of-way that its council's vacating?
Yes, it does.
So we don't have a gap?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Um, any comments? I mean, I think, I don't think we're going to have any orphan lots out there. I think it's going to come all the way through. Okay, any other public comment? Thanks, Noel. I mean, it was a good observation. I just need clarification. All right, seeing none, public comment closed. Deborah, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed with stipulations mentioned.
Thank you.
Item 17.
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water services to 6200 Stallion Way, a single-family home lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without this explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comment on this? This is really a ministerial-type item.
Cutting road.
Yep.
Cutting flat.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Please call the question. Thank you.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item 18.
Yes, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order to Arc Electric Incorporated in the amount of $15,000.00 to purchase and install a school zone flashing beacon on Southwest 172nd Avenue, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2021, adopted budget, and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, is this located in our town?
It is. Well...
Yes, it is, and that's why we're responsible for it.
Okay.
All right, with that, that's my only question.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Seriously?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I understood when we were doing for the elementary school, that's a public school. This is a charter school run by Pembroke Pines and Pembroke Pines. Why are we responsible for supplying something to Pembroke Pines? It's not a public school. It's a charter school. So if it's because we have this contract with them, I think when it comes up for renewal, get rid of charter schools in it. I can understand doing the elementary school because our students go there. The charter school, we may have some that go there, but it's not in our town. It's run by Pembroke Pines for the benefit of Pembroke Pines, and they, never mind.
Got it.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Keith, I mean, do we have any control over this, or are we obliged as the municipality?
No, you're supposed to be required to fix this, but we can throw it in the settlement agreement.
What's really cool is Noel's still talking on the screen. And he sat down five minutes ago.
You know, I mean, I put this in the same category as, you know, we pave our roads, but people from all over South Florida drive on them. It's just, this is our part of the world, and we're going to take care of it.
Yeah, I don't see...
Okay, all right.
Rhetorical question.
Yeah.
Rhetorical question. Can I throw this into the Pembroke Pines lawsuit compensation?
Maybe a little late for that.
Withdraw my question.
I'd rather take the cash.
All right. Deborah, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 19.
Hey, Noel, it's the last one you can talk on tonight. Yeah.
Burned up one microphone.
Maybe public comment on adjournment tonight. I'm not sure.
Item 19 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, entering into an interlocal agreement with Broward County. I just lost my frame. For cooperative fire, rescue, emergency medical services, and special operations response through automatic aid and the closest unit response, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By the way, Deb, none of us have ever had that happen to us. Ever.
All right, any council comment on this item? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item? Come on up, Noel.
Noel Hollisworth. I had four pages of notes for tonight, guys. I agree we need to do it, but is this a renewal of the existing agreement? Or is this an entirely new agreement? And if so, what are the difference between the old agreement and the new agreement?
New boss, same as the old boss.
There was never really an old agreement. It was a hodgepodge of agreements between municipalities who had agreed to cooperate. This is the first one that would be county-wide. And that's basically the answer.
So Keith, if you know something, I do have a question or two. I... We have two neighbors that are, generally don't want to send any fire apparatus our way. This leaves it up to the county and takes them out of the decision-making process. And I realize there's certain stipulations that they have here. It has to be under, you know, certain response conditions. They can't just, they can't just ask them because they're closer nearby. It has to be an active fire, certain types of... Can they refuse?
Under this agreement, they cannot refuse.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Can I vote twice? Good.
All right. Deborah, please, call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes, with an exclamation mark.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Sorry, Noel. Motion adjourned.
Public comments closed.
Thank you all. Good night.
All right. Good meeting, productive meeting.
I... It's just missing the point, you know? But...